Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 9th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee and welcome our guests. Thank you for attending with us this evening. I'll officially call this meeting to order and ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. (applause) The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for We'll start with an introduction of our members and Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Our student reps are not with us this evening. They are at one of their last few practices for the band championship this weekend, which I think Erin will tell us a little bit about more now, but we wish them well and we hope to see them at our next meeting. And so, I want to go -- do you want me to --
No.
Okay. All right. So, I wanted to give everyone a little bit of an update about our search for a new superintendent. In front of the committee, you should have gotten a copy of the timeline and we need to look at that and approve that so that everybody knows what we're looking at. So, we met in a workshop, I'm going to say last night, Tuesday evening, and determined that we would do this search process as a committee. We are not going to expend funds to hire outside consultants. We will do it ourselves. And so, we are creating the advertisements and the brochures and essentially doing Phase One, which is the developing everything and announcing. And the big part of that is to advertise the position by the 20th of November. So, in the next two weeks. We will also be asking community, both school and community representatives, to serve on a preliminary screening committee. Mr. Repoza, you'll be getting a letter from me. Mrs. Callahan, a letter from me. But we will ask representatives from the town of Millville, the town of Blackstone, parents with children in the schools, members of Unit A and Unit C, and members of the school committee to serve on that preliminary screening, review applicants, and narrow down the candidates for us. And that phase, and that will begin after our recruitment phase in early January. So, we hope to -- we have a deadline of the 3rd of January to receive candidate packets, review those packets by the 8th of January, and schedule preliminary interviews the week of January 15th. Then have that list narrowed down and for consideration by the school committee in a public, open meeting. We will do that the week of February 22nd to hopefully name a new superintendent to the district by the 1st of March. And have them start the 1st of July with some overlap with Mr. Himmelberger so that there can be some mentoring, some training, and some work with us to really get off on the right foot and have a well-planned start with a new superintendent. So, does anybody have any questions about this timeline or the dates that are on it?
Just one. We talked in the workshop about getting the brochure paperwork that we all need to figure out how to fill out those fields, what we want in those specific fields. I was just, if you guys have those finished, I'll take them at any point in time.
Is that this?
Yes, that one there, so I can finish producing that.
Do you want to pass them down? Does anyone else have one?
I'll have to find it in my stuff.
Sarah sent hers to me. I'll forward it to Jack.
That's actually, that's the one you made into --
I can forward it to you. I shared it with Jane electronically.
You did with me, too?
While we were sitting here for the last hour.
Oh, okay. I'll forward them all to you, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please, Tara, put it online.
And thanks to Sean, we now have technology. I could probably do it now, but I'm not. Now that I have access to technology, I'm not that good at it. Any other questions about this? Is there a motion to approve our timeline?
To approve the timeline?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Tara, seconded by Erin. The search process for superintendent of schools timeline, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And again, we do have letters that will go out to Chairman Repoza, Jen Callahan, Chairman Keefe, Dan Keyes, Esther Cody, Julianne Woolford. But what I wanted to let folks know about tonight is the public letter, an open letter to parents with students in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. And we are searching for a parent from Blackstone and from the town of Millville. So, if there's a parent who is interested in serving on this preliminary screening committee, they need to send a letter of interest to myself. They can either do it by email or by sending an official letter to the school committee, the school district office in Blackstone at the high school. And those letters of interest need to be received by November 21st so that we can then appoint some people.
Do you want to talk about the Survey Monkey and then the focus groups?
Focus groups, we can. So, we will also be seeking input from the community in general and the staff in general. We'll also be asking for a representative from the leadership team as well. So, we'll be sending out, we'll be asking Alan to help us find a representative from the leadership team. But in terms of getting feedback from community members not asked to be on the preliminary screening committee, we are looking for insight in terms of what people might be looking for. What do they think the purpose of our district is? And what do they think a superintendent's major role should be? What should their strengths be? And we'll do that in two different ways. We will have focus groups for the staff within the school district. And we talked about doing Survey Monkey and we will have a link to that that will go out various ways throughout the community so people can provide input. Anything else? If it's good. Anybody else? Okay. So, we are well into this planning. If anybody has any specific questions about the search process, your best bet is to chat with Erin. She's going to coordinate this from a school committee perspective and keep us all organized. So, we'll look forward to the process. Public forum. You have in front of you Consent Agenda A: Warrants Field Trips and Meetings of the October 26th Meeting. Is there a motion to approve it as Consent Agenda A?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Moved by Tammy, seconded by Jack. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Field trip, I think, is fourth grade.
And --
Demystic.
And Mr. Goddett's field trip is in there for PBS.
Hearing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move Consent Agenda A. Board of the Superintendent, Mr. Himmelberger.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reggio. We recently had one of the largest technology conferences called MasQ at the end of October. And there is much happening at the state level with technology from testing to curriculum. So, I asked Mr. Bozan to give us a brief update of where things are headed. So, thank you very much, Sean.
Good evening.
So, MasQ was great as it always is. I've been going for over 10 years. We had a great group that went from high school robotics program and programming to our instructional integration specialists at the high school, as well as Sarah Tasker here, who does the same. We had a good representation throughout the district at MasQ. And I don't know what else to put this. As a tech leader, you try to see what people are doing in the classroom, but you really don't grasp it as much on the integration part. To watch the group that went and when we had lunch after, it was like watching kids in a candy store. I just sat there and listened to what they were doing. They all chimed back out to Mr. Himmelberger and included me on what they learned. They're still digesting most of it and bring it into their departments. I think it's an expense that's well worth it for the district. As I said, I've been doing it for many, many years and it's always a battle of, you know, how do you get coverage? But it was well worth the event. The big topic between tech directors and integration specialists and even some of the superintendents we saw there, and I'm a member of Meta, which is Tech Directors Group, was what the state's talking about, about making computer science a core curriculum and how do we meet the needs of that between hardware, infrastructure. It was a big buzz. But I feel that it was well worth the expense of the district. It is the best show in the Northeast. You see people coming from Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Connecticut. There was one teacher from, actually, there were two teachers from New Jersey that I spoke with. And I know one of our very own here, the middle school principal, said she had been going to Rhode Island and she said, "Wow, this is phenomenal." It was a good takeaway. There's more, all of the, I would say 90% of the breakout sessions there are teachers demonstrating what they do. And I think with the representation we had, we're going to see teachers that may save us a little expense in going because they do an hour or two session, I'm hoping, but there's already some buzz about that. Great sessions. I'm going to move right on if there's not any questions. Is there any questions on the ask you? I'm going to move right on to just give you a --
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to confirm, that was Mr. Pilling, the robot, is he the robotics?
Mr. Pilling was there.
Okay.
Yep. They saw, I know they went to some MakerBot sessions, Sarah and Mr. Pilling, Sarah Tasker and Chris Pilling. They went to some MakerBot sessions.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to move right on to the meat and potatoes for me, which is the stats for the tech department I provided you all with. November 8th, excuse me, November 11th will be the day that we, the one-year anniversary of us putting a true help desk system in place. These are some of the stats. I'm not going to go through them, but I will point out two things, first response time and ticket close time. I like statistics. This basically shows, the first response time shows us responding to a request. That could be, "Hey, did you try this? When are you available so that we don't interrupt the class?" And so on. So, that's two days, which, in 13 hours, which is really three days and 31 minutes just to respond to them. The system automatically does respond to them, but that's not in this stat. The system, when you send in the ticket, actually sends a response saying, "We received it." That's not included in the stat. It's when we pick it up and say, "Okay, we have questions." Or we fix, yeah, or we have questions. The ticket close time, our first 30 days, I believe when we put it in place, we were up over 17 days. So, we have made an impact. But I think we can do better. I know we can do better. Actually, my standard is to establish a service-level agreement of a one-day turn and burn, just turn around and fix outside of projects. Think of a teacher in a room that just has an LCD bulb that needs to be replaced. This is an average of all of our projects and changing LCD bulbs from the menial toner cartridge to a full data migration. But imagine having a teacher wait seven days to have a bulb changed. It's crucial that we get there within a day. My mantra is, they can lose a period, but they can't lose another day, so, or another period. And that's what I'm shooting for. Those are the two in the tech stats that I really wanted to touch on. Are there any questions on the stats we gave?
What is your biggest request? Biggest?
I didn't drill into that as much, but if you go to the second page.
What is costing us the most time and money?
Down there. It's really kind of small, but they're pretty even across the board. You'll notice the Chromebooks really aren't that big. MCAS CBT, see the blue?
Yeah.
That was a big chunk of our time this year, prepping and supporting. Password resets, we're working on that as well. We're trying to put something in place that will expedite that. We want to give it to the teachers so that they can at least reset student passwords when they say, "Oh, I forgot." They may or may not have forgotten, but they'll be able to say, "Oh, okay, I got that." I could come up with a, I really, I can't read it, I'm sorry. It's so small. I can get back to you on that, though.
I think this is what I was looking for, yeah. I just wanted to know where, what your time was being spent on.
So, I've got it open here real quickly. 11.6% of our time is user setup and password resets. Our network is 11%. Chromebooks are only 5%. And I could drill into this, it's about 50 different categories, so.
Yeah, no, this is more than enough information. Thank you.
Not a problem.
So, Sean, when you're saying the Chromebook, that's the repairing and fixing of Chromebooks or that kind of, more student-driven?
Any questions with a Chromebook, issues with it? That's actually putting them, enrolling them when they come in. And I'm going to hit on that with my, with my, our completed projects for this year. But anytime we even look or answer a question to do with a Chromebook or enroll them, that's, that has to do with that.
So, that includes student questions as well?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's 5.1%.
And the expectation of the repair, and we talked a little bit about Chromebooks and their life expectancy. So, that number of repairs will most likely go up as we're using this more and more?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm going to move on just to give you a quick update on current technology projects and completed projects. We had 10 servers over the summer that we needed to virtualize, excuse me, 12. We were able to complete 10 of them. We still have two that we need to complete. We still have a backup project to complete this year. And we, we're putting in place, hopefully soon, we're streamlining a lot of things with Google Forms. So, one of them was a time-off form that actually works with a calendar so that the administrators can see, a teacher can put a request in and say, "I'm going to be out for the day ahead of time." And they can go to that day and week for coverage and take care of it. We're still putting it in place, though. That's a current project. Completed projects, the one-to-one program is complete at the high school. We now have 812 district-wide. We added an additional 312. We are talking with the staff about possible replacements of their PCs because those are severely aged and using a Chromebook, but it's a transition. It's not a night-and-day thing. It's going to take some time. And some of them are already using them right in the classroom. The wireless, we just finished a wireless software update with our brand-new switches and access points. We were having some issues with dropping with the Chromebooks. And I was, I'll be honest with you, I was a little scared at the high school at first, thinking, "Ooh, boy, I think we overwhelmed it." But we did not. It was actually an update. So, we're pretty happy that we finished that. And as I said, we virtualized 10 physical servers already. We still have two more. And the upgrade to the bandwidth district-wide is complete. Millville Elementary was the last, it just happened two weeks ago. Millville is now, all the elementary schools went from 50 over 50. We are now 200 over 200, which means upload and download. The high school and middle school, where the bulk of our Chromebooks will be when we get there, is now at 300 over 300. And believe it or not, we're, at times during the day, going over 200 megabytes with the usage, so.
Sean, when you say "virtualize," what are you saying?
We took a physical server.
Yeah.
And we're going to decommission them, but we're leaving them there for now.
Okay.
But we took them and put them, what's called on an ESXI host. It's a virtual, it's basically a big server that you cut up into software servers. So, for instance, if somebody came up and they said, "Hey, we want this SQL server for this piece of software and we want it district-wide," you can, they call it spinning up. You can spin up a virtual server within 20 minutes where, I mean, if you needed an extra server, ordering, the expense.
Buying and installing.
Putting it together.
Yep.
It's a lot easier. But the backup project is what concerns me with all of those servers, making sure all of those are backed up and the data that's on them.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it in a nutshell, it'd be a my-tech, unless you have any other questions?
I do.
I knew you would.
Yeah, of course you did. So, we have a new, we have Nick. Everybody has a Nick. Everybody has to have a Nick.
Is Nick full-time?
Yes, we do.
No, that's my question. Nick is .5, right?
Correct.
Did we, we budget for full-time? Okay. So, you're just not available full-time?
No, I think we have no, we are, we had to shift and adjust.
Yeah. Nick is doing a phenomenal job. He's, I'm a family guy, so everybody that comes into my department or my house is family. He's melded well. He's very smart. He's a go-getter. Every day, he's learning. Just today, I had to tell him again, I said, "Slow down, baby steps, okay? There's three of us, so just take your time. You'll get there."
Okay. Well, there's 2.5 of you, right?
Yes.
And 2.5 is enough? Not enough? Not even close?
I will address that in budget, but I will say that we, if we're going to expand any further, we need to make sure that we're staffed in the technology department. And that means not just operational, which would be my department, that means instructional technology, which will cover some of the PD, or work with the administrators to do the PD.
And that's the PD of staff?
Yes. I will add that Ursula Hunt is doing a phenomenal job and same with Tara.
Are they the ones taking care of the kids' Chromebooks that are?
No, they're handling, say, the G Suite questions with teachers and what they want to do with G Suite.
Do I need an app to give a whiteboard?
Yeah, well, how does this work? Can I try it out? We implement it. So, if they say, right now, our, I'll dove into this, our staff can pretty much hit anything on G Suite. But because the kids are on their Chromebooks and they're going home, we have to be very selective with what they get for extensions and apps. So, we have a form that the students and the teachers can request the app. When the students request, they reference the teacher. We get in touch with the teacher, CCing. It used to be Dave, our curriculum director, letting them know what they wanted, does it meet their curriculum, should we put it in place? We look at ways of them, more of circumventing around our Chromebook and network. But then we get the blessing now from our principals to go ahead and do it and we push it forward. The teachers pretty much can go to any extension or app. I think I might have got off on a tangent there. Did I answer your question?
No, you didn't. Yeah, no. Any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
So, you touched on it lately, and I know we're going to talk about it probably further in depth later in the year, but the classroom desktop replacement of those, would you foresee that being a Chromebook replacement or is that not enough for the classroom teacher?
I like to use Apple and Microsoft and big companies that listen to their, they used to call them focus groups. I really don't like that term anymore, but it's a focus group. You get everybody together and you say, "Okay, here's what we're thinking of doing. What do you think? What do you want to do?" In my eyes, I think it's a possibility, but think of it this way. And then Alan and I talked about our labs today, what's going to happen to those. They're PCs. That means that apps that run on them are PC-specific. There are replacements for those in most cases, almost all cases, in G Suite for that PC piece of software. But when you've got a teacher, and this gets to our PD question we had earlier, conversation we had earlier, you can't just, if they're using a testing software that's PC-based, you can't just pull it from underneath them. We have to have the conversations of weaning them into it. Ultimately, I think that's a very cost-effective way. There are districts that are doing it now on my Tech Directors Group. You've seen a lot of people chime about it, but it's not a night-and-day thing. You can't do it in a day. I think in a couple of years, it's definitely an option. But you need to have that communication. You need to have those focus groups with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, right off the bat, I can imagine Mr. Juvis hair going gray and falling out as he tries to work Photoshop or InDesign on a Chromebook. He'd go crazy.
Well, there might be a few exceptions, but I mean, so if you had one come up totally broken tomorrow and there was no repairing it, what would the replacement request be?
I think right now, our faculty would, we would have right now a Chromebook to give them to use, but we have a lot of our faculty that are already using them.
That's good.
As long as they get to G Suite, it doesn't matter what they're on. Doesn't matter if it's a PC.
Can they do stars on a, can they do stars on a Chrome laptop?
Yes, they can.
Can they attach to their SmartBoard things?
That's one of the, again, will come up in budget, the things that we'll need to address. There's, for lack of a better term, many ways to skin a cat. There's many ways to print, control print. So, getting the option that not only, that meets their needs, I don't want to say cost-effective, but try to be the most cost-effective and meets their needs. There are options like using Chromecast that we're looking at. We're actually hopefully going to be, I'm waiting for six to come in and we want to start testing them around the building. So, well, there's a will, there's a way. We can figure it out. It's just time.
And it is, I mean, as a teacher, it is a huge adjustment. There are many things that I still use my laptop versus my Chromebook four that I haven't quite gotten adjusted yet.
And there may be a way, there may be a way to do that, but it's the time and the training to do it.
Somebody who carries around four different items. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think you're very busy on Saturdays and I don't get that, but we do appreciate what you're doing because it makes a world of difference. What?
I was wondering what that was, this Saturday.
I don't know. I guess that's when they can come in when nobody's around.
Kids' Chromebooks?
Early morning.
Yes. Well, thank you for what you do because we truly, several of us attended a Mass Association of School Committees and Superintendents Conference and technology was the only thing people were truly talking about and technology is part of the curriculum base and technology is the future. You know, we are in a, as one gentleman said, the fourth revolution, industrial revolution. We're no longer, you know, our factory lines are not people anymore. Our factory lines are computerized, you know, robotic machines. Our nanotechnology and biotechnology are going to be that fourth industrial revolution and we need, we need to think about the students we have in kindergarten, what are the careers that they will have when they graduate? And it's not the things that are out there right now and we need to prepare them for that. And, you know, technology's not going to go away.
It's a utility at this point.
Yeah.
It's definitely a utility.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two bellwethers around technology that are indicative of the fact that this is only going to get exponentially more, more growth. And one is that as of July 1st, there were 17,000 tech-related jobs unfilled in Massachusetts. And we like to think of ourselves as the leader in K-12 education, but we are now lagging behind several other states in the amount of technology-based curriculum. Now, the state is reacting to that and starting to talk about technology-based coursework as foundational curriculum, meaning you have to take it to graduate. So, just like you need four years of English and four years of math, you might need three years of computer science, coding, software design. So, there's a lot that is behind the scenes now. The other thing is that the Department of Ed is now going to create its own cost center for technology, something that I suggested a few years ago when you have to input technology across 1,200 lines and now it's going to be tracked, managed, and budgeted as its own cost center. So, nobody ever says, "We have too much technology, we don't need it." And Jack can certainly attest to the amount that, of technology at the higher-end level. So, in order to get our students prepared, we're going to have to take serious analysis at how we go forward with all aspects of our technology. But thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving along, I just wanted to put a quick reminder out there that next week, our parent teacher conferences in all five schools, and they are, the hours are on the website in each school, Monday through Thursday, there are parent-teacher conferences happening. And I would urge all parents who want to be informed and want to discuss their child's progress to please take advantage of those dates. So, moving along, we have a couple of documents in your packet around So moving along, we have a couple of documents in your packet around student enrollment. And one of them is the annual student enrollment between Blackstone and Millville that comes up with a community percentage. And this will be the October 1st every year that is set for the next year. And the numbers do not move much. Blackstone's percentage last year was 72.78. This year it's 72.65%. Millville was at 27.22, this year at 27.35. So that's the breakdown between the community percentages. On the yellow sheet, you will see the choice in and choice out, as well as the lower half, which shows where our students go. And a very similar number to FY '17, where we had 321 students attend out. This year, it's currently at 324. And you can see before you where our folks go. But this is certainly something that we will talk about as we go forward. So on the yellow page, on the left-hand upper quadrant, you'll see school choice in. So that represents, it's still fluctuating, but it's in the low 50s for the number of students who choice in to us. And then we have just about 100 that choice out. And the net result is that the bigger that gap, the larger the tuition, and the smaller the state aid becomes as the offsets come in. The lower half is simply where our students attend if they don't attend here at BMR. And you can see the breakdown there. So I'd like to move into the three-year plan. And this, I did feel like it was doctoral work. It was a lot of research and formatting to put this together. This is for July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. It's a three-year strategic and financial plan. I'm not going to read it all. The committee certainly has it, and we will, I will be happy to entertain questions, thoughts, comments as we go to a final copy, which then this can be disseminated as the committee wishes. So the executive summary is really about the changes happening across the country within public education. And then the lower half of that highlights the report of the state auditor, which was very timely in that this report updates the structure and the finance of regional school districts. And obviously, there was a push a few years back to get more municipalities to regionalize. However, given the lack of state funding and state support, most people are not going that route. Coupled with the fact that in the auditor's report, which again, I think you have a copy of that in your packets, it can be dry as dust to get through, but in between, some of the pages, there are some real interesting facts and figures. The bottom line is that regional districts, the 58 academic regions in the Commonwealth, have declining enrollment in total, a little over 10% in the last 10 years. Regional vocational technical high schools have increased enrollment over the last 10 years of a little over 3%. Parents have a lot of choices. Students have a lot of choices. And it almost becomes the chicken and the egg. Well, we want students to stay here, but they only want to stay here if we have everything, which costs money, which means we want the money to build what we need, so students will stay, so we get more money. This is where we have been. And as we go through here, I think the theme is that we are facing some issues that must be addressed to ensure the sustainability and the long-term viability of our district. I have become very attached to this district in a short time. And I have formed strong relationships with educators, with students, with parents. And I think the overriding goal is that, the universal goal is to make sure that we continue stronger. There are three main issues that I've identified. Stabilizing enrollment being one. Continuing to update the curriculum and technology, which we have started or restarted again over the last couple of years. And then the improvements of our infrastructure in all five schools. All of these issues and their solutions have one thing in common. They require systematic funding increases to reach that goal of long-term viability. This will in turn force our member towns and residents to assess at what level we want the educational opportunities for our students. Certainly around stabilizing enrollment, it is important to note that we need to do, and we are doing, a better job of, for lack of a better term, marketing ourselves. And I think depending upon individual student experience, parents have formed their own opinions as to the strengths and weaknesses of all of their options. And we had a terrific assembly today at the high school where all of our eighth graders came up and got to listen to a terrific speaker, Jessie Funk, who was on America's Got Talent, and really, and who was a pretty troubled kid back in the day. And she is originally from Utah, and she really had a pretty impactful message. She also sang a couple of songs. And there, you could hear the pin drop in the auditorium. Now, there was 600 people in that auditorium. And there wasn't too many empty seats. And so those are the types of interactions that we need to do to make sure that everyone understands what we have to offer. You know, I talked to parents who are not aware that we have a terrific robotics program, that we have a digital design and digital production offering around being a public broadcasting systems high school. It's only 120 in the country, and this weekend, associate producers from PBS in DC are coming up to work with our students. So we have a lot to be proud of, and I think there's a pretty good music program as well, which I know Erin will talk about later, so I'm not going to get into that. But these are the pieces of the puzzle that our own parents don't know. And so that becomes a key piece to give the information to parents so that they can make their best informed decision. And sometimes the grass is greener, sometimes it's not. There are many reasons that go into that decision-making. But we, I will be at, if I can schedule permitting, most of the parent-teacher conferences. At the middle school, I'm having coffee with parents both on Monday and Thursday to make sure that they know what we do have. We have done an outstanding job at the high school of advancing our AP course offerings. And the success of those test scores is truly remarkable. And yet, that's a story that is sometimes not told well. So all of that is under stabilizing enrollment. Now, the overreaching demographic in most districts is declining enrollment. There are very few Brooklines around whose dynamic is just through the roof in terms of public education. There is, at the tail end of the paragraph on stabilizing enrollment, a very quick, but not meant to be short, changed item for future consideration. And that would be to move grade eight to the high school and make that an eight-to-12 building, and move grade five to the middle school and make it a true intermediate school. That obviously would require a change in the regional agreement. But in terms of critical mass, in terms of the ability to manufacture the offerings for our students, there's a lot of benefit in that possibility. The continuing of the upward trend of improving curriculum and technology, that is critical. And the fact that we do not have that curriculum leader this year after the previous almost three is difficult because we have started a lot. And we go through, I mean, Sean works more Saturdays than he cares to admit. And there is so much going on within technology. You know, we now have every student at the high school with their own Chromebook. And Sean and Wen have researched that and leased those and have the programs in place so students get the Chromebook when they arrive as freshmen, and then they return it when they graduate. And everybody has embraced that technology and is using it. We know that the amount of dollars it's going to take to continue the projects that we need around the Chromebooks and curriculum integration of technology, the phone system, which should be in the Smithsonian. And that needs to be replaced with something a tad more modern, a voice-over internet protocol. We have a lot of our interactive boards that need to be replaced, and that becomes a risk-reward, cost-benefit analysis that is challenging because we have spent money in the past, but we've gone from blackboards to whiteboards to Smartboards to flat-screen paneling. So where does it go? And so that becomes, how much do you spend? When do you leap? And how do you manage the future of it? And that is the challenge of it. But just these initiatives alone, and again, in the narrative, these are not nice-to-haves. These need to take place to support the district's ability to communicate, to store data, to transmit data, and to give our students the very best opportunities at their career path or their schooling when they leave. Over these three years, these total solutions average about $190,000 a year. Now, we went through a wireless project that was $280,000, but E-Rate was able to fund half of that. So hats off to the E-Rate folks. However, they are changing the rules of engagement because it's, everybody's on the bandwagon. So we have made tremendous strides in our technology. We are doing a lot with a little. But we have to, we have to continue to review it and analyze it to see where it must be supported. Curriculum. If you talk to any teacher who's been teaching more than 10 years, they will roll their eyes when you mention the next acronym. NCLB, ESSA, Nation at Risk. It is a challenge to keep up with what is going to happen next. However, there has been a lot of good work that's been done, 2009, 10, 11, so that we do have frameworks, so that we do know the sequence, what we teach, how we teach it, and when we teach it. We now know that we must continue that work, or we slip back and repeat the mistakes of the past. From 2009 to 2015, our general fund budget grew by $322,000 over six years. Less than a point and a half, or about a point and a half. Over the past three years, the general fund budget has grown by $1.1 million. But there is still more work to be done. The problem, which we have repeated over and over, is our federal grants continue to be reduced. There is no additional money at the state level. And yet, the state itself has identified the needs that we have, except they are subject to appropriation. So we have done a lot. We have had tremendous cooperation and have had teachers embracing the changes and using the technology and the assessments. We have completed the implementation of our literacy program. We have common assessments to assess student reading levels. We have now complemented that with a writing program, new this year. We are in the second full year of rolling out our Envision's math curriculum. We also have adopted the Big Ideas Math, which complements that as the bridge from elementary to high school. We have, as you heard at the last meeting, rave reviews around our Stars Assessment, and we look to be able to continue that, hopefully with some sharper pricing as we invest in that over the long term. We do have challenges in front of us. Certainly, the K-8 science curriculum is a big one. And those dollars are estimated at a minimum of $150,000 to purchase the materials, the professional development, and the supports we need to make sure that we are matching to that framework. High school instructional materials and classroom supplies, we had not updated for a very long time. We went out and purchased them in 2015 and 16. But like anything else, you need to continuously review it so you know where you are and where you have to go. We have still other areas in front of us. Social studies curriculum. For those of us that are as old as Mr. Reposa and myself, we remember civics and history and social studies and political science, and we haven't taught that in a generation, and you know what we get with that. We have project-based learning because that is what our students are facing when they leave to go to school or career. We have continued numbers of English language learners that must be supported. And we must continue to integrate technology across the curriculum. The district needs to fully fund a position of curriculum leadership. It is a critical, critical piece. Improving infrastructure. We have the John F. Kennedy School in the Q, as they like to say at MSBA. And we are moving that project forward. We have, we will learn about the high school by December 15th, if that is included in this year's grant program. We have the facility overviews that we did with Nesdeck that are up on our website that show the conditions of these schools. And we know that we invested a lot of money in our roofs. And that's the type of investment that we're going to have to plan for as we go forward in other areas. We are looking, we've met with consultants around solar opportunities. We think that there are some, even though the rules of engagement there have changed dramatically over the last several years, we think there are opportunities there for us. We know that we need to address both. We know that we need to address both Kennedy and the high school. Those original boilers are hanging on. I used an example, if the high school project was approved and we took the project total at twenty-five million to renovate and to replace building systems and other areas, that if, in fact, SBA, MSBA will still reimburse at that fifty-seven plus percentage, that they would assume fourteen million, two fifty of that total cost to renovate the high school. And then based upon roughly the enrollment percentages, seven point six-three-two would be Blackstone share and three point one million would be roughly Millville share. That's of the high school, which would have to be allocated. We know that both at Maloney, AFM Maloney, as well as Millville Elementary, we have other, um, pieces of the infrastructure that need immediate attention. When I meet with vendors or when visitors are in our buildings, it doesn't matter which one, all five of them get high marks for how good they look, for their age, something no one ever says about me. But we get high marks for how well these buildings have been maintained over the years. And it's a credit to our custodial staff that our environment for teaching and learning is as safe and as productive because of the work that they put in. And we did reduce our custodian staff, which was already at a pretty bare bones staffing by an additional sixteen percent this year. Page six, if you look at, um, the projected three-year budget. Again, you can see the proposed budget that the school committee, um, adopted. You can see the FY eighteen actual and then three years projected. The increase is three point one, I believe, two point four and two point four percent. Again, that's to the total bottom line. The impact to our towns is much, much higher. But unless there is more, uh, support at the state and federal level, we are in a challenging position. The other school services, that three thousand cost center is where you would find transportation, our athletics, our music, um, and student services. In, um, fixed charges, that is primarily our benefits. Predominantly health insurance, which we are already grappling with for next year. We have some good news there in that our loss ratios seem to have finally, um, abated. But we'll see how much that will drive, um, the total renewal for next year. So again, we, over the past six years from oh-nine to fifteen, increased our budget in total by one and a half percent. Over these, those six years, it saw the additional burden of new regulations and mandates on special education, curriculum, bullying, accountability, and on and on it goes. The state auditor's report that was released a couple of weeks back, updating the structure and finance of the Massachusetts Regional School Districts, bears that out. We ranked fifty-six out of the fifty-eight academic districts in our per pupil funding based on enrollment. That's a fact. And that is cited, uh, in the Department of Ed's website as well as the auditor's report. We are catching up. We have stabilized our environment. We have made gains and we have done a lot of really, really positive improvements. But we have more to go. On page seven, you will see the general fund budget history, stretching back to oh-nine. And then at the bottom three that are in, uh, italics would be the projected numbers for nineteen twenty and twenty-one. But that, that, that gap in where we need to be and in where our towns can support us is the conundrum that we face every year. You can look on page eight to see the school choice numbers, which unfortunately dovetail with uneven funding and a lack of continuity of stewardship with the number of superintendents during that time. And I, I really believe that, that though, we're, we're getting pinched everywhere we look. From chapter seventy-one, that doesn't get appropriated where the law said it was going to be appropriated, to a reduction in federal funding, to a three hundred thousand dollar hit to our state aid due to school choice. And the state is looking at school choice because some districts have been unfairly harmed by the, the original intent of that legislation. And they are looking at perhaps capping it. But as you can see, we continue to send more people out, more students out than we receive. And we've stated the, the reasons for that. We need to have pride in what we do have. I think sometimes that is frustrating for me when people come up to me and tell me that they don't have pride in this district. And for any of you who have sat through opening convocations, I tell everybody assembled to be proud of where you work and be proud of what you do and be proud of who you are. Because character is what you do when no one's watching. So our choices clear in the conclusion. We have to find the will to move forward as one educational community, supported by two towns willing to take on the planning, and advocacy to create that sustainability and that long-term viability. I have witnessed firsthand, over these last three-plus years, an incredibly dedicated staff of professional educators and support staff who do amazing work. If we could get support from just a few more folks, the district would be able to furnish every student with the very best educational opportunities because we would have the additional resources and the planned growth to accomplish just that. My hope is that all who would read this three-year strategic and financial plan would come to that same conclusion. Respectfully submitted, November ninth. So, um, I certainly would welcome any comments or, or critiques. I think that, that this tells the story of both where we've been and where we want to go. It also outlines where, what we need to focus on. And a lot of it is at a very granular grassroots level of meeting parents one-on-one, of meeting students one-on-one. And asking, nothing is better than sitting next to students in the cafeteria and asking them, what's the best part of their day? And what's not the best part of their day? They're very honest. But it's very revealing. So, um, this is my three-year plan. And if there are certainly any, um, changes that we want to make, we would do them over the next several weeks so that we can have this as a document as we move forward.
We're on budget planning process, yeah.
Right. It was a little bit of work, but it was a labor of love. Because I think that there is as much upside potential as there is chances to fail. And it's amazing where we are right now. Because you can look across all of our schools and see those, those areas that you just sit back and smile. Because there is great teaching and learning.
There is.
And terrific opportunities going on in our district. But you can also see what needs to be done around curriculum and technology improvements and around the infrastructure challenges we have. So, uh, I look forward to the process and I think, uh, you know, that will certainly be, um, where I continue to move, um, over the next several months. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
That would end my report.
First and foremost, thank you. Um, I know that this was, was a labor of love. I also know it was a labor. Um, it is difficult sometimes to put into words and numbers, um, trying to make a very complicated system make some sense. And to put it in to terms that the average person reading it gets a picture. Um, I want to caution school committee members. When you look at this three-year budget projection, um, that's essentially based on the budget, the programs, um, that we have and need to continue in our district. So the narrative is as important as the tables. Um, when we say that we have a need to get a curriculum director or an assistant superintendent back into our district, that's not reflected in this projection. That's a, that's something that we believe we need and we either need to find a way in those numbers or we really need to look at those numbers and say, they even need to go from there. Um, so our budget discussions will become very important. It's important that we, as committee members, digest this, um, understand it, ask questions about it, tweak it as, as need be. Um, I know that Mr. Himmelberger is very open to that. He, he is, um, working really hard to make this be a document that we can use, um, and we can refer to and our communities can refer to. Um, and as we do that, we then will ask for a meeting of our community officials from both towns, um, a table that we can all sit around and really talk about what this means and, and how do we move forward? And how does it fit with the, the town's plans? I, I know the, the town of Millville has created a, a strategic, um, budgeting plan. And it's, 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 it's dire. And we have to fit into the dire. And we have to fit into the, the needs for our school district with the constraints that we have. So we have to work together on this. Um, we have to share this. And so we have to make sure it's really, um, what we think, where we want to go. And, um, it's going to direct our budget season. So I encourage everybody to read through it. I encourage you. We will bring it up at our, our next meeting and, and next meetings and until we feel like we're ready to, to bring it forward to folks and, um, start that dialogue.
The other pieces that the, the state auditor's report, which is rather big, uh, I would be happy to put the abridged version together or at the very least highlight where I feel the, so, because it is a lot of material to go through to glean out the pieces that, that are relevant to us. But certainly I can, um, maybe highlight, uh, a report and get that to the committee.
Yes, I, I intended to go to, they had a workshop on this at the conference and they canceled it. And I think I know why, because this thing probably wasn't even printed out yet. But, um, it would be helpful to get a,
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
You know, go to page this or go to this section. Any other comments on this, um, three-year plan? Erin?
Bear with me if I have any slurs. Um, and I'm just going to read what I was writing while I was, while you're going through it.
What page?
Uh, these are just my notes that I'm going back to. So I think for me, I, I, again, I want to say thank you because I know this was a lot of work to put all of this together. But I think what we want to present to our town has to have more numbers and less summary.
More numbers, less words.
More numbers, less words. But like Jane just said, you, you know, even for us as a committee, we need to know what this, what these bigger numbers are including. So the town does too. We need to make it more of a, you know, a user-friendly, a later, uh, document. So just a few suggestions in this ten-minute time. Um, so I had written, I would like to see less history, or, or move the history into a separate document that is highlighting where we have been. But, and then this is our three-year plan, this is where we need to be. Projected numbers for a lot of things, I think, need to be in here. So you touched on them. Um, curriculum, science, we need it. So how are, where, what years are we projecting that in? Are we breaking it up through any time? I, I feel like there needs to be, um, something along the lines of this, showing the, the curriculums specifically. Um, another note I made was technology. We already have that three- to five-year plan from technology last year that we started the process of. That needs to be in here. We're already doing it, but it is part of our three-year to five-year plan.
And that will be the next, the next iteration, the next phase as we go from,
But anything that we're presenting to our town.
November ninth, yes.
Right.
And you will, you will see the next reports from, from Wen will be numbers that get into, matching the, the global number into the different,
But even more than that, because it's a three-year plan, um, Jane just mentioned, you know, it, these numbers don't include a, a assistant superintendent or a curriculum director. If it is our plan to implement that practice of the budget, we need to make that part of our three-year plan so we don't show up at a town meeting and say, and this year we're hiring the assistant superintendent back, and it wasn't in here. You know, and so us as a committee, we need, if that is something that is our goal within these next three years, I think it needs to be in here number-wise, grid-wise. And show how we're, and when we're, we want to implement that.
But that's why it needs, that's why I'm saying, focus on the dialogue as well as you're focusing on the numbers as you read. Because if it is important to us, if it is important to the eight people based on what we know and what we've learned, then we have to fit that in there before we go to the town of Blackstone, the town of Millville and say, you know, twenty-three is now twenty-four because we need this.
So we already know we need it. That's something that should definitely, we should, we should sit down and have that conversation now. So we can include that in our three-year plan. Then, I, I, on a smaller note, I would like to see some of the stuff you mentioned. I believe, um, it could be broken down even more onto what is our three-year budget plan? A, a capital plan? Because you mentioned in here, um, MES has a water tank, oil tank, fire suppression. Those are, to me, more capital before we sit down. You have boilers, windows, HVAC. There's a difference between our school budget and those type of items. And, and we could go to all the buildings and list that. So a three-year plan for our budget, I mean, we need to bring those capital plans to the towns. And I had a, a second note here for the positions we've lost because it is beyond an assistant superintendent that we want to see back in. Uh, maybe it's the reading specialist, maybe, you know, but those are the things that we need to include in here to get back to,
Can do it.
And that's just my suggestion. Like, I, I think we need, this is great. We need to, people need to know the history that, but I think we need to separate the two.
And I, I, I don't know. I, I guess I think it's a picture and it, and everything.
Yeah, we need more numbers on that.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that. I agree with that. The numbers have to,
A picture with numbers.
Because, because people won't read the doc. Just like in this, in this auditor's report, I was like, eh, give me another graph because I can read a graph. Um, so yes, people won't read the dialogue. But I'm telling us, we need to read the dialogue so that we can agree.
The dialogue is good to support.
Because Erin and I are sitting here, we need a curriculum director. We agree, but we agree, we don't know that we agree.
But I think to Erin's point is that when, when we release a number, I mean, I learned this very, very early on in this, my position here. The minute you change a number, and in my case, it was just correcting, The minute you change a number, and in my case, it was just correcting a typo, the response is overwhelming when you increase. So if we're out front with the number and saying, "We need somebody who knows curriculum to guide us through curriculum," if we include it in and then later talk about things and reduce the number, that's much... Then it's not, "You surprised us with this number." Well, we didn't surprise you. It was in the words, but you didn't read the words. And you just, you know, people are number people, and it's the numbers that matter in our discussions with towns, so...
And that's how you need to build... You need to make sure that... You can't worry about the big number at the bottom. You have to make sure that you have all the pieces in there that you want, and then you got to prioritize them.
Sure.
So that's the next steps, Erin's point.
That was all I had. Thank you. Anybody else?
I think Erin covered them. You have to just take time to update and...
Well, that's us. It's not just... That's us too.
Absolutely.
Looking at our budget and...
But when do we want to present this to our towns?
Let me talk to the town administrators in the chairs and see if we can agree on a date that we can all get together and make that, you know, an official date, and then we'll make sure we all are there. I know I've talked to both towns, but we have different dates out there so far, so we'll see what we can come up with. Jerry's got a question.
Oh, please, come here. Yes, absolutely.
Making my own notes, Jerry. I'm not looking up.
It's going all right. Excuse me, I got a pretty good cold... Just a question for you. I was curious, have you taken into consideration in your three-year projections, anything on the OPEB obligation? Is that built into that?
No.
Do you intend to?
I would leave that to a further discussion because what some districts are doing is putting in a very, very small amount, which is almost a placeholder. It's not going to do anything except you can say, "Look, we got it in there." You know, $8,000 this year and $9,000 next year. So the problem is, we are still trying to fund it yearly. And that's... I mean, we're already in a very challenging position just to get through operationally last year and this year. So there is... There hasn't been the ability to put it over here and not touch it. So that is not included in these projections. Now, we can certainly carve out, here's $25,000 this year, and $25,000 next year, and $25,000 the year after, and put that into a post-employment benefit fund. That satisfies, in name and spirit, the requirements, but in order to get to a fully funded, it's going to be a very challenging...
Oh, yeah. The concern I had was that if you intend to go out and look for bonding or intend to go out and get funding for the advent of the schools and the things that you wish to do, the best way to do that is to have yourself on a firm footing. Firm footing would be that you make some payment towards it. The state has recommended 30-year amortization on it. So there should be some consideration of some monies being put there because then the bond market will look at that and be able to say, "Well, at least they've taken it." No one expects anybody to pay it off in five years. It's going to be a 30-year process. But you need to put, in my opinion at least, you need to put something there to be able to get your bond rating up and to hold that rating. Otherwise, you could be a negative bond rating, which would be an impacted situation for your new schools. That's all it was. I was just curious if you had it in there.
Yeah, no. Nothing in there, not a penny in these projections.
What is BVT doing? What is BVT doing for their OPEB?
BVT, with the last negotiations we had with the teachers, the teachers actually are contributing towards it. So there is... Because they feel as if the support team that works with them, that they felt as if if it wasn't for that support team, they wouldn't be as successful as they are. Therefore, they decided that they would help contribute, and so they contribute, part of their salary, every single paycheck, goes towards contributing towards the OPEB.
So do you... Does the school committee put any money aside out of the general budget?
Yeah, we do that as well, but the most we're looking at right now is, as Mr. Himmelberger said, I think we're about $25,000 a year. That's it.
And that's a lot for some other districts.
And that's... But there's some schools, as you know, that are up to $100,000, $100,000 trying to make it happen, but it's very difficult to do. The thing I'm trying to impress upon it is, if you do nothing, the bond market looks negatively on that. If you do something, $5,000, do something. At least the bond market will say, "Well, they're making..." Because there's no requirement yet to come up with a number. They are addressing it as a potential for 30-year amortization. And I think you get millions of dollars here. So lots of money. So you got to put something towards it to help your bonds if you're looking to go out to get money for schools. That's all I'm saying with the SBA. You'd get an extra nod because from the SBA if you did that. That's the only reason I asked if it was in there. I don't have a copy of what you have, so I didn't see it.
Very good point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anything else?
Okay. Thanks. And that is my report.
All right. Thank you very much. School Committee Forum. Georgia, did you get anything? Karen?
I left ME yesterday, and they were having a very successful colonial feast. The fifth graders were putting that on tonight, so, you know, it seemed like they were a good number. I think they said they were right around 40. Seniors had headed over there to hang with the fifth graders, and the police and fire were invited, and they were eating some turkey and having a nice dinner. So that was looking good. Book fairs are across the district, so when you're at your parent-teacher conferences, I know JFK, AFM, Millville, and the middle school are all having their book fairs, so support reading. Come on out, and good luck to the marching band. And I know Erin's going to talk about bands, so I'm going to...
I feel a lot of pressure.
Good luck to marching band at Nationals.
Do you have a video?
Can you play for us?
She has lots of videos.
I would just repeat the good wishes to the marching band, and I hope they win again.
Tara? Tammy?
I was wondering if anybody knew the update on the Millville playground. Does anybody here know, or can we find that out from someone?
We can get that information.
I'm just curious. I mean, I was part of that team that was out there, and I haven't heard any stories of playing on such playground yet, so I was just wondering.
The swings are still tied up, so I would...
Oh, the swings are tied up. I was just curious to see where that was. Okay.
Yeah?
Um, no. Good luck to the band. I don't know about football. Are they done now or...
They have two more games.
Thanksgiving. They do have... I know they have playoffs, right?
Right. They had a playoff game last Saturday and unfortunately lost, but this is a very talented team that we have in the fifth year of football and easily could be nine and one, eight and one for a season. The game on Thanksgiving is against Sutton, and the marching band is going to play.
Right.
And that's going to be a pretty neat...
I think that's really exciting. 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM on Thanksgiving morning.
And I'm doing that.
Is that a home game or something?
That's home.
It is.
That's home.
Thanksgiving morning. There's...
Okay. Band. So our marching band is off to Nationals this Saturday. They're at their final practice of the season tonight, which is a little heartbreaking for a lot of people because they have literally practiced since April, every Tuesday, Thursday night, for three hours a night. So the plan right now is the kids have to be there very early. They practice before they leave every Saturday. That is the routine. But right now, they're requesting anyone in the community to come out around 9:45 AM to the high school to... They will be doing a run-through and then to see the buses off. They do plan to leave around 10:30. So that would be like, you know, a community send-off if anyone has a free hour Saturday They're doing this a round trip this year. They're not spending the night, so it's going to be a very long day. They have about a four-hour bus ride when they leave around 10:30. There are 16 bands in Division Four this year, so a lot of competition. We've been very successful, had a lot of first places, and then saw a little bit of... Our score just stayed put for two weeks, and then we saw some big growth in the score last Saturday night. But again, a lot of competition, a lot of tough competition. So when they come together on Saturday in New Jersey, there are bands all the way from Arkansas, Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania, some, and then around here that we've already competed against. So bands that they've never seen before and that are in their group. Group Four Open is what our kids are. So Group Four starts at 2:30. Our kids are scheduled to be on around 5:30. There will be Facebook Live if anyone wants to see that.
Livestream.
Livestream from Erin.
I'll try. That's the 12th band to perform. Group Four ends around... Oh, wait, did I just say 5:30? Yes. Let me make sure my time's right. 5:30 are our kids. The awards start around 7:15. Last year, they took over an hour. So, you know, the kids are standing there waiting for an hour, and it's pretty intense. And then they will have a little pizza party before they get back on the buses and come home on their four-hour bus ride. So it's going to be a very long day. You know, like I said, tough competition. So we'll see where they end up on the... If it's a trifecta or...
We try again next year?
And they keep going.
So return me like 1:00, 2:00 AM?
I think it's projected at 12:30 right now, but, you know, that could be put off...
So that police...
I don't know because it's usually the next day. I think maybe that's why they're trying to get the people here in the morning.
And I love the idea of the pre-performance.
It's 12:30, you might hear the fire trucks. I don't know.
Right?
I don't know.
It was posted on your Facebook.
And then, and I think the biggest reason they're doing that round trip is, two weeks later, they leave on Wednesday, the 29th of November. They were invited to a very large Christmas parade in Nashville, Tennessee. So they are leaving Wednesday night around 5:00 PM, 7:00 PM maybe, and they have a 17-hour bus ride to Nashville. They will get there Thursday night. They will have... They will... The first part of the itinerary says they will walk to this dinner. I'm sure it's so they can stretch their legs. So they'll have a dinner Thursday night. They have a few tours scheduled for Friday, and again, some more dinners, some other dinners. Their parade is Saturday morning. It is going to be on local television. I'm not sure what Blackstone gets, but Channel 10 in Rhode Island, which is Channel 93 on Millville cable, I'm not sure about Blackstone, but it's an NBC channel. We'll have it on. It'll be broadcast live, so that's where I'll be watching it from, and one of my children will be in the parade. Yeah. Well, you know, there was a conflict with basketball tryouts, unfortunately. I believe there are about 80 band members going though. I believe they have two full buses and chaperones. Then they... So that parade's Saturday morning. They have an eventful Saturday afternoon, and then Sunday, I believe they're going to an amusement park and then driving home overnight Sunday into Monday. So that is why they're not staying round trip overnight in New Jersey, I believe. And they will be very busy again Thanksgiving Day, football parade at 10:00 AM. Football parade. Football. Yeah. There will be a football game during the band performance. I'm going to be in trouble for saying that.
I can't believe she said that.
There will be a band performance during the football game.
Trouble now.
Yeah. That was a joke. It was a joke.
There will be a great football game and a great band.
It's nice to have them both come together, and I hope both appreciate each other for what they are.
And I hope the community comes and shows its support.
I hope the temperatures are projected better than this Saturday for Thanksgiving.
I like it cold.
That cold?
Oh, yeah.
And I, again, attended the MASCE/MASSS conference. I will put together some notes for everyone, but essentially did go to several sessions, including the... All the law ones. And so lots of legal things that we will be sharing with everyone as we develop our policies, which we will bring clean copies of our proposed policies to the next school committee meeting. Anything else? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
When's our next... Wait, hold on.
December 14.
December 14.
But we have some workshops before that.
Yes, we do.
We don't want to...
Thursday, the 16th.
Thursday, the 16th.
All right. We have a motion.
Motion?
I think it was made over there.
Somebody... Oh, Tara? Second? Second by Jack. So moved by Tara, seconded by Jack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Whatever, adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.